Okay, I'm gonna start with Rob's first. And he's Rob Van Dyke, and he is our county attorney. He's served the county for 12 years, eight of those as the county attorney. And he wants to thank you guys for the trust you've placed in him to hold this very important position in the county. And he's looking forward to continue to serve you guys for another four years. As the county attorney, he enjoys providing great legal service to all the elected officials and department heads at the county. As a voter, it's your job to elect the best candidate for each of the elected positions at the county. And as the county attorney, it's my job to make sure that they all have excellent legal service and advice to assist them in the work that they do. When we collaborate, we better serve the county and our community. As the chief prosecutor for the county, I'm working hard to hold offenders accountable and preserve the safety of our community. In this role, I have three main passions where I focus my greatest attention. First, I love working with victims of crime. The criminal justice system can be confusing, frustrating, and even scary. I gain a lot of satisfaction when we deliver justice for a victim and help their voice to be heard. Second, I'm proud of the Kane County Drug Court. Under this program, my office, the sheriff's office, and treatment providers work together to keep drug offenders in treatment instead of in jail. We have seen great success over the last 10 years building a community of recovery. Third, I love our Children's Justice Center. I helped establish the center eight years ago. And last year, we completed construction for our new permanent location, funded mostly through local, private fundraising and state grants. I love the work that we do collaborating with all the local agencies that are involved. When there are allegations of child abuse or neglect, placing the best interests of the child at the center of our efforts has led to better outcomes for these families across the county. As Rob says, he would love to have your vote for the Kane County Attorney this November. And I just want to point out, both of these gentlemen are not here tonight because they are busy working on a case that's protecting the county right now. And they apologize for not being here, but sometimes things take precedence. Keeping our streets clean is one of them. Well, that isn't quite the right way to say that. But keeping the wrong people off our streets. Okay, now I'm gonna meet Tracy's. And he says, "I am sorry that I cannot be with you tonight. I'm grateful to be able to serve each of you in the role of the elected Kane County Sheriff. Kane County is growing and changing. Lake Powell is looking pretty empty, but visitation is ever increasing. In the past couple of years, call volume at the sheriff's office has more than doubled. As many of you know, we have been called upon to investigate several complicated cases there in the east side of the county. As your elected sheriff, I'm committed to do what is necessary to meet the needs of all residents and visitors of Kane County. We must meet the growth and other challenges gracefully and professionally. I am proud of each of the 54 members of my full-time staff and the dozens of amazing volunteers that assist us. They are true professionals that love serving each of you. I believe the citizens of Kane County deserve access to their elected officials. If any of you need anything from the sheriff's office, please contact me sincerely Sheriff Tracy Glover." And as your county clerk auditor, we are doing everything we can to keep your elections secure and safe and secret and sacred and give the best customer service that we possibly can give to the citizens of our county. We're working hard to keep the money taken proper care of. And we would welcome, I would welcome any questions that you might have of me about our office and all the variety of things that we do there. And if you don't mind, I'll cut mine short. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we would like to thank our county attorney, our county clerk, and our county sheriff for the great work that they do for us here in Kane County. Our hats go off to them. We'd also like to thank each one of our Republican candidates who have showed up here tonight to let us know on this end of the county that they are here to hear our voices today. And, um, okay, so we hope this event will be a success. And, um, the fact that all these candidates are here today shows that they have, uh, are willing to hear us out. Each candidate will have three minutes to inter, now, each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves to answer questions. I'm a former wrestling coach, so I know that three minutes is plenty of time. So when the blue flag right here goes up, that will show that the candidate has one minute left. And when the red flag goes up, the candidate will need to stop and decide whether or not they want to pick up, down, neutral, or defer. Just kidding. So then we'll move on. So the order that we have agreed upon to do this is Andy will be first, then Patty, and, uh, and then Michael East, and then Celeste Myers. And we'll go from there. Andy, you'd like to go?
Thank you.
She'll start eating track or duck.
Oh, wait.
Please.
Hey, got it all.
Thanks for having us. I appreciate the chance to come out and visit. I am a transplant of about 30 years to Kanab. Moved there to raise kids. My wife's from Southern Utah. I grew up in a small town in Southern Oregon, so we were kind of rural. And we moved, had a one-year-old. I had her up in Northwest. We moved to Kanab. She had extended family in the area. That was kind of our initial draw. We were married in Richfield and have a lot of Southern Utah. Took a little while to get used to being on the Oregon coast, but the Red Rock stuff and the nice climate definitely girls on you. Been involved in multiple different businesses through the years. Had an auto repair in Kanab for years. Was in the internet business for about 20 years with Express Web. We did a lot of wireless stuff. And then South Central brought in a new manager, and he took over. He's built a great network. We sold that business to, uh, to South Central, and they do your internet now. I was a deputy in the Big Water area for years. Back Sheriff Glover and I started with Kanab City PD about the same time, within a year of each other, I think. And I did a few years there and then picked up with the county sheriff's office and spent quite a lot of time out here then. And, uh, been in business focused on the internet business for a few, tell a few years ago, we sold that. And I have, uh, this is my first term as commissioner. Just finishing, obviously, as this next election comes up. Worked with Mayor Schmacher on some projects and things. Got to know some of the folks out of this way. I really have enjoyed our time in this part of the county. I'll be glad to answer questions.
Okay. All right.
He still has a little minute.
Okay.
You wanna sit? Do you understand that?
Either or. The podium's there if you wanna stand up. If not, you can.
I'll stand. I feel more comfortable standing for some reason. It'll work. I'm Patty Cabea. We moved here to, my husband and I, Mark, we moved here to Kanab almost seven years ago. We bought a home back in '14 and rented it out for a while. I, we came to Kanab, kind of, I'm here by default. I, I knew we wanted to move somewhere different than Seattle area because of all the rain, the traffic, the big city life. We just wanted something smaller. And Mark would come down and visit some good friends who lived here in Kanab. And one day, the house was for sale next door. And he said, "I wanna buy it." I said, "Fine, whatever. I'm just too busy right now, so you do it." And so we bought the house. He thought it was great that he could ride his four-wheeler out the front door and go up into the Red Rocks. And that was a big draw to be able to come here to Kanab. And we do love it here. The only thing we miss is our children that live either on the west coast or the east coast. But we know how to drive and go visit them. I'm the youngest of seven kids. I was born in Montana. My parents were farmers up on the Big Flat. My mom got tired of being a poor farmer's wife. So my dad said, "If you can make 500, give me a job that makes $500 a month, I'll take it." So she found an ad for the Border Patrol and gave him the application. And he applied and was accepted to the academy back in the 60s. So we moved to Southern California where he was a Border Patrol agent when I was three. And when I was 11, we moved up to the Canadian border. He changed to immigration, and that's where I went to high school. I went off to Brigham Young University in Provo, got involved in ROTC. At the time, I never thought I'd be in the military. When I graduated high school, I thought, you know, the military is for losers or something. But I got interested. They said I could go to a summer camp and earn $700 and do all these Hula things. So I went, had a great time, and joined the military. Joined the ROTC and then later got a commission through BYU. I was on active duty for 10 years. I got out to stay home with my children. Ended up divorced, so I needed a job. Went back in the military and spent 16 more years doing a multitude of things. Three deployments. Was able to retire in 2015 and came here to Kanab. I feel that my leadership experience in the military for 26 years would bring some, a new set of eyes and ability to problem solve and make the hard decisions and be an advocate for the citizens of Kane County. I've done hard things. I've jumped out of airplanes. I've deployed. Been in harm's way. Had to leave my family. But I've also learned to be flexible, learned how to be a soldier 24/7. So I'm used to hard work. I believe that families and local residents come first. I'm a true fiscal conservative, and I pledge to spend county tax dollars wisely. I believe that public money should be spent on critical county infrastructure and services and not on public special interest projects. And I'll provide truth transparency with the citizens of Kane County. I'll be proactive in pushing information to the constituents. Information is power. And I feel like I can be an advocate for the citizens of Kane County. My only agenda is to keep Kane County magically unspoiled and grow with grace.
All right, Michael, you're next.
My name is Michael East. Kevin, thank you very much for setting this up. I know it took a lot of your time. I do appreciate it. This is awesome, being able to come out and meet the people. Again, my name is Michael East. I'm the CEO of South Central Communications. I've been in Utah for about 11 years now. Born and raised in San Diego. Went to school at California State University Sacramento where I graduated with my degree in accounting. Went to work for a CPA firm in Stockton, California. That firm specialized in telecommunications. I knew nothing about telecommunications whatsoever except this CPA firm they specialized in, therefore I specialized in it. Went to work auditing and doing consulting work for these independent telephone companies throughout the United States. Part of that, I truly didn't even know that there were these independent telephone companies. I thought everybody had Pac Bell because that's who I had in San Diego. And so after, I was there for eight years, I wanna say it was. One of my clients asked me to join their, their company as their chief financial officer. So I was their CFO for three years and then became their chief executive officer. That was in Portland, Oregon. So met my wife in Portland, had one of our children there. I have two boys, Brian and Matthew. They're 17 and almost 15 now. Went to, I wanted to go to work for a larger telephone company when I was in Portland. So we moved to Indiana. There was a company that was about twice the size of the company in Oregon. Really enjoyed Indiana a lot. I very much disliked being away from my family and the, and my children away from their grandparents. So we wanted to find a way to get back to the west or to the Pacific time zone. Oh, my goodness, I've only got a minute left. So we moved to Annapolis, Maryland, where I was consulting for a while. And then the, I got a call from our national telecommunications organization. And they asked if I was interested in interviewing as a CEO for this company in, in Utah, in Escalante, Utah. So we literally, I came out here real quickly, came out here, took the job. We literally moved from, from Annapolis, Maryland to Escalante, Utah. I mean, those are two completely different extremes. When we came to Kane County, I loved it. I love everything about Utah. Love the family values, love everything that our generations before us have developed and protected. I look forward to continuing to protect what we love about this area.
Is it Jordan? Can I turn on the lights?
Hi, everyone. I'm Celeste Myers. Thank you for being here with me today. Also, thank you to the precinct leadership for holding this event and for the township of Big Water for hosting us today. Many of you know me well already. About two and a half years ago, I worked closely with Hyrum Short. I was the Kane County Coordinator for the Tax Reform Referendum. And Hyrum was the local representative for this part of the area. And every time I contacted him to see how he was doing, he would have sheets of more signatures. And everybody in the county wanted to know, "Hyrum, how are you kicking our butts? We've got way more people in Kanab. How do you got so many signatures?" He said, "Well, I've been knocking on every single door and saying, 'Hi, I'm Hyrum. I'm right over there. Would you sign this?'" It was to fight back against the state legislature's food tax increase and other convoluted tax stuff. So that's what we were working on together. And thanks to Hyrum and the county clerk auditor and everyone working as a team, we not only got more signatures per capita than any other county in the state, we also were successful in overturning the food tax change that everyone was upset about. So yay, Hyrum. So I started out my political career, um, several years ago, I was just a concerned citizen. Started going to every meeting, figuring out what I could figure out. Then I was appointed to city planning, became the chair of city planning. Then I joined Kanab City Council. And I also serve as the Kane County Republican Party Chair. And in that capacity, I work with the State Central Committee and go to meetings all over the state and meet with other regional leaders. And because of the great relationships that I've been forming, I decided that I could do the most good as your commissioner. And so as to prepare, I started attending every county commission meeting. And I just want to share with you, in case anyone's wondering, what does a county commissioner do? So just like every public official, we take an oath to uphold the constitution, to support and defend and obey the constitution, and to discharge the duties of our office with fidelity. So that's the overarching framework. And then within that, the very core of it is to provide services, infrastructure, and programs here locally. And then the next layer, if you will, is working with other counties near us to form coalitions and have a stronger voice. And then from there, we go out to working with the state and even federally. So I look forward to answering your questions.
All right. So now, um, we're gonna, we have a series of five questions that I said earlier that our communities have come up with. And so the first question is coming from Big Water, Utah. And the way that we'll have our candidates answer these are Michael East. By the way, we gotta explain them what seat they're running for. So Celeste and Michael are running for seat B. And then Patty and Andy are running for seat A. So the first question is gonna go to seat B. And then Michael will go first, then Celeste. And then it will be Patty and then Andy. Does everybody get it? And then we'll switch up. Okay? All right, so the first question, this is a Big Water state question. The first year Kane County implemented the transient room tax TRT throughout the county, the county raised approximately $200,000. Last year, the county raised approximately $5 million. It has been said by county officials that Amman Gary Resort is the number one producer of these TRT funds. Do you feel that the dispersment of these county funds has been fairly dispersed throughout the county, especially when considering the added impacts to areas of the county that tourism has affected? And if elected, how will you, as a county commissioner, help Big Water City receive its fair share of the TRT tax funds? Michael, you're first.
Absolutely. So let me start by saying, um, I've gone on the record multiple times saying that I view transient room taxes as being way different than sales tax and property taxes, right? Property taxes are paid 100% by locals. Sales taxes are paid by locals as well as tourists. And then transient room taxes are paid 100% by tourism. So I think that when, when we talk about tax increases, we need to make sure that we are not talking about transient room taxes. Or, excuse me, when we talk about using taxpayer funds, we should not be talking about using transient room taxes. Transient room taxes are not taxpayer funds, right? Tourists are not residents of Kane County, therefore they're not taxpayers in Kane County. So transient room taxes are not taxpayer funds. Transient room tax is what they are, is an opportunity for us to reinvest tourism dollars into our communities and to improve the services that we provide to tourists as well as locals alike. Do I believe that, that the dollars that have been raised have been spent, you know, equally or correctly throughout the entire county? The answer is no. I mean, I think that, that now that there's more of an awareness about transient room taxes, I think there's a lot of people that are, are saying, "Hey, what about us?", right? When I was talking with Heather Recker early on in this process, and she was, she was talking about a request to Kane County for the dinosaur, uh, dinosaur festival. And it was, uh, it was not provided. I don't know if it was declined or how that went about, but it, but it was not provided. I mean, certainly, it was a $5,000 request, as I recall the conversation. There, there is a large budget to promote tourism in Kane County. And I think that, that we need to make sure that all areas in Kane County are equally represented. That's one thing that I look forward to doing if elected as a county commissioner, to have the conversations with all of the different towns and cities and incorporated areas, find out what the needs are, and let's make sure that we are having the conversations so we can, can make sure that transient room taxes are spent within the guidelines of the rules. And there are rules as to how transient room taxes can be spent. But we need to be able to, to uplift all communities equally. Am I about out of time? That's a sumo.
Yeah, you have 15 seconds.
Okay.
All right, Celeste, you're next.
Yes, so the tourism tax is something that the state legislature mandates how it's spent. And they also, to a certain degree, mandate the amount. And, um, that's where it's important for us as a county and to work with the state legislature and also to form coalitions with other tourism-driven economies to advocate and leverage with the state legislature. And that is a particular strength of mine. I work very closely with the legislature and members of the legislature. They answer me when I call them. They text me back when I text them. They're available to me. And I'd like to continue to use that relationship to further the objectives of the county. So to give you an example, the county is, now has, okay, so normally, 47% of the tourism dollars have to go back into funding tourism marketing. 53% now, and this is due to advocacy from Kane County commissioners in the past, can be spent to mitigate the impacts of tourism and to make things better for the visitors as well as the residents. I believe that how that money, the available part of the money gets allocated is crucial. But what happened in the past is there's just kind of this uncertainty about how that money's gonna be spent. People are feeling resentful, left out. They're beholden to the commissioners to make the final call along with the Tourism Tax Advisory Board, which is the travel council. So what I envision is for the portion of the funds, the 53%, that can be respent and used to mitigate, that if a slice of that could be directly proportionally, percentage-wise, returned back to the regions where it derived from. So if Amman Gary provides 40% of the tax dollars, then they should get 40% of that slice. That way, they'll be able to predict what's gonna be coming back to them. And then each region can decide what happens with that money within the parameters. And that way, it gives some of the agency the power back to each particular region. Am I out of time?
30 seconds.
Oh, okay. And just to let you know, this year, I'm giving kudos to the current Kane County Commission. This year is the first year that the county commission has kind of taken a greater hand in how that money is spent. And I see working together with the commission in the future that we can do even more improvements so that we can feel at least relaxed that, okay, I understand the process now and I can work within those parameters.
Okay, Patty, you're next.
Well, lots already been said, so they've educated, educated you somewhat on TRT. I do believe that the TRT funds need to be wisely spent. They might not, you know, it all depends on your definition. Maybe they're not taxed, but they are public funds. It's not somebody's private funds to use. And now that they're such a big pot, I think a lot of people are interested because it is quite a bit of money. But we also have to be prepared for if the economy crashes and there's less tourism. And I know that from what I've heard in the meetings that the county has done, set aside enough money that we do have that protection. I've been up to Cedar Mountain, Orderville, had an event in Kanab. So I've talked to some citizens, and most of them outside of Kanab do feel that they're not getting their fair shake of the TRT money. Now, I don't know the exact breakdown, so I can't speak as an authority on that. But I do, what I would do is I think that each of these communities, whether it's a special service district or municipality, should have a priority of what they would like that falls within the parameters of how the money can be spent. You know, there are limits on how the money can be spent. But I know, I've heard there's, you know, creative ways to spend it that do still fall within that parameters and still do good things for our county. I know that, like, for the tourism part, Camille Johnson is the tourism director. And so there is money specifically to advertise for Kane County. And so I guess the priorities, if you have ideas for that, if you're out here in Big Water, I would say that that should go to Camille. And she would help the county commissioners in making that decision on how those funds should be spent. I know that they have passed new rules that some of the TRT money can be spent for law enforcement out here and also for search and rescue. Now, one of the questions that I saw come in had to do with firefighting. That is not listed there. I don't know if that's something negotiable with the state if you can go back. That is a valid concern, having this firefighting. That Big Water's having to support the area around. So I think that would be something to be looked at, on how you can support that safety also besides the sheriff and the search and rescue. I do think, I don't know if it can be an exact percentage because Amman Gary, maybe they bring in 50%, but they don't have the same head count as, because it's more expensive resort. And so there's a lot of money brought in. There's a lot more tourists that are staying overnight in Kanab. So I don't think just splitting exactly by how much money comes out here to, you know, the Big Water Church Wells area would be the right thing. But I do think that money needs to be distributed so everybody feels like they are being taken care of because of the impact of the tourism on our county. And that's why we're receiving that money.
All right, Andy?
Ready? Yeah, I couldn't agree more with all three comments we've heard so far. Dead, really dead on, on where we're at with that. This is definitely a topic we could spend a lot of time on. It's a big one. And, you know, we've had, COVID did kind of the opposite effect in Kane County to a lot of areas. It brought mass amounts of domestic travel to the county. We lost all the foreign travel, and we were scared to death at first. We were cutting and scrimping and thinking, "Oh, my gosh, you know, this could be catastrophic if it goes the way we think it's gonna the first few months." But it did nothing but increase on visitation. So we've had a banner year this year on TRT, and it does have everybody's attention for good reason. There's a lot of money that's gonna come into that. So we ran a mail through the legislature this year that just affects this last year's collection because they're so high. We didn't feel like all of that should go to the state. We didn't feel like all of that should go to the state in the same way it always has. And to be clear, as was mentioned, we don't keep any of that upfront, every penny of that goes to the state. And they, they reallocated with a string on every dollar. I mean, you would think this was the federal government, the way they run this state. You know, they tell you how to spend it, we get into that forty-seven, fifty-three, that's been really well explained. So we, we've got a, we've got another ten percent bonus on this year's, uh, spending, and we fight every year at the legislature for increased control of TRT. Uh, I don't feel like that fifty-three, forty-seven split shouldn't be discussed, that should all come back to the county, and the individual counties should be able to decide what they need, we're not all the same. And that's statewide, it's ridiculous that they would think Kane County needs the same, you know, bucket of money for the same reasons that Weaver County does, or, you know, or whatever, it's crazy. We're lucky in that we have visitors. We don't need to advertise most of the time to get more people here. We've generally got more than, I'm never gonna get this covered, we've generally got more than we can deal with, right, and a lot of the time, so we're not worried about bringing more. But we need infrastructure and mitigation to support those that we have. And I'm a firm believer in that if we, kind of the buildup, we will come, they'll come kind of thing, if we build, improve our infrastructure and our facilities and our arenas and, and parks and what have you, that, that will benefit everybody. So we made some major changes this year, for the first time with a ton of work from our county clerk and myself, we completely restructured the TRT budget. That used to all go to Camille, and they, I don't want to diss them anyway, but they used all of that money for all these years since that program was implemented, basically, at their discretion. We changed that this year. All of that money comes into the general budget, and this is all public info, if anybody wants to get with the clerk and, and look up how we're budgeting it, goes through a public budgeting process like every other department in the county. Got a lot there, we pulled back millions of dollars that was in a kind of rainy day fund, that's back in the general budget now. We've got another bucket of money that's gonna be all mitigation, that will be the first time we've done that in the county for law enforcement roads, water, and other things, um, coming up. So completely restructured that TRT program.
All right, thank you. Okay, our second question comes from Church Wells. This question is about, um, water and roads. So currently Church Wells Special Service District is upgrading its old water lines through an ARPA grant that the district got through the Division of Drinking Water. They are currently working on engineering and are planning on upgrading some of their roads while the water system work is being done. The county in the past has told us that if we bring our public dirt roads up to standard, the county will help in the future by maintaining those roads. Church Wells Special Service District is not an incorporate, an incorporated town, nor does it currently receive road funds. Will you, as a county commissioner, support the unincorporated areas of the county in maintaining our public roads if we do our part? And can you help us, uh, can you help get work with the state to, oh, sorry, can you help us work with the state to get a turn lane into our community off of Highway eighty-nine? Okay, now, the way that I actually have this is Andy Wood is her first, then Patty, then Celeste, then Mike. So Andy, if you want to talk more about TRT, you can.
Well, we got a lot on water and roads we talked about too, so every one of them could use ten times that time, but, um, on the water, if we have the source water, which you guys do generally, the wells that maybe need improvements for pumps, I know we struggle with, you know, the marriage of that and the equipment going out, and, um, but I, I think the real infrastructure piece of that is what the water conservancy district. Uh, Mike is awesome at fundraising, and there's a ton of money coming down the pipeline through ARPA infrastructure, you know, through the, all the Biden money, and water is at the very top of that list for one-time agreement, both federal and state. So there is gonna be a lot of money available for water improvements. And, but I do think, the county doesn't have a lot of involvement in water as a whole. Typically that's municipalities and water conservancy districts in those more rural areas. So, and you don't like working on Priya and stuff, love to see that grow, and I think that's an awesome way because cost involved, uh, if you need, uh, to levy a fee, the, the water districts are, are the best at knowing how much and when and what should be spent on. So this local government concept, I totally buy into that when it comes to the smaller areas for water district. The roads is another huge conversation. The county has met in what the state calls hold harmless for, I believe it's about seven years, don't quote me on that, but they had a, a gas tax increase at the state, it was massive, and it was brought a ton of money into that road system. All our money goes to the state, and then they allocate it back to us by the mile of road that you have and the type of road. They inventory those, that's not, it's county taxpayer money, but they tell you exactly how that can get, how that gets spent. And when they did this legislation seven years ago, that's the thirty-second, one minute left. The rural counties got screwed, big time. Ton of money, the urban counties wanted for freeways and, and bigger roads, you know, they were doing all these, had the switchlets of projects. And obviously, as far as legislators go, you know, we get one and, and they get dozens in some of their counties. They had the vote, they, they moved all that new revenue to these bigger counties, and then not only do we now not get new growth or population, we don't get any money for new growth on roads. So in all these years, we haven't got another dime out, out of the state that controls that fund. So we are working with some lobbyists and lawyers right now to address that. We've got about twelve or fourteen more rural counties that are working on this for the interim session, we just started this discussion, uh, in earnest, uh, last month, to revisit that fuel tax. And if that happens, then we'll hopefully get out of this little harmless and get our population increases back, sorry, I'm gonna overuse a little, and our new mileage back, and plus hopefully a new part of the gas tax, which would give us, and that could double or triple or quadruple our current road budget, which is very small. So we'd love to help with more smaller roads, and we could get into Class B and C and D with a little more time. Sorry for the over.
Andy has much more, uh, relevant knowledge on the roads. So the little bit that I was able to find in people I was talking to about the roads, there's basically the Class B roads, which are paved roads in the county, and there's Class D roads, or, yeah, D roads, which they'll repair if there's like a washout, they're dirt roads. Now historically, let's, we can go to Vermillion Cliffs, which is a housing area that was outside of, it's outside of Canav coming this direction, the developer didn't do the roads as they were supposed to. Eventually, they were hazardous, you couldn't get emergency vehicles, as I heard, I read in one of the, um, comments from Church Wells, that, you know, it's getting hard to get ambulances and safety, safety issues, these roads need to be brought to standards, but it comes with a price. Out of Vermillion Cliffs, at the time, it was about seven thousand dollars, I forgot, I was told by a former commissioner, that each resident, but it increased their property value, and now there's many more residents out there than there was when this happened, probably ten years, you know, within the last ten years. So if Church Wells is willing to pay whatever it is, and to bring them up and make sure they're engineered to standard, you know, you have to hand them off to the, the county at a level that they're willing to accept the roads, then I do support that. I believe that that's something that we need to provide to the citizens of Kane County. You know, there's enough population growth in the county that we don't need to all just be on dirt roads when it's becoming more populated and not just very rural, barely, rarely visited and with, you say, you know, Almengary, there's just a lot of growth happening everywhere in the county, I do support it. With the right parameters, and Andy shed a lot of light on the money, I'm not aware of that, I do know, I was told that adding more roads, you don't get commensurate money. Like, you know, you do get a certain amount of money from the state, but just because you add a mile of road that doesn't increase per mile, like, it takes a lot before you get extra money. Am I wrong?
No, you're, no, exactly right, yeah.
And, um, and some of that's, you know, voted on by the, the community, so you have to take a vote and democracy, even if you don't vote for it, you're gonna have to pay the money to, to have those roads improved. And, um, if it gets turned down, then I guess you have to get more support and come back.
Okay, so next, please, Celeste.
Yeah, this is a complicated issue because the county has to fight the federal government for roads rights, and we've done a good job of that, but it's been an expensive fight for us. And in particular, this question that Kevin's got regarding the roads. First of all, I just have to give a big shout out to Kevin, not only is he the precinct chair for Church Wells Republican Party, but he also was, worked really hard on getting this ARPA grant for you all and, and worked with engineers and, and everyone necessary to, to make that happen, so he does not, in my opinion, take enough credit for this big deal. Getting a three million dollar or whatever it was ARPA grant, um, for your water and your roads is, is huge. Further to add, so I'm the Kane County Republican Party Chair, and we had our first caucus in four years this year, and there was no one for your precinct, Church Wells precinct, no leadership available. I just started going down the list of Republicans in Church Wells District and calling people blind, hi, I'm Celeste, I'm the chair, and we need somebody to help with caucus, will you do it? No, no, no longer Republican, no longer living here, until I got to Kevin, he's like, whoa, maybe I could, what do I need to do? So completely awesome. I know they don't get attention, but you deserve it. Anyway, the whole point is, I, I've been talking a lot with Bert Harris, he's the supervisor of roads for the county, and trying to understand his situation. They have about a one point five million dollar budget. I asked him, what budget would you need just to sustain? He said, more like three million, so he's working at fifty percent of his budget. I said, you know, what about with Church Wells getting, would you maintain the roads for them if, if they bought them up to snuff with the ARPA grant? He said, we can't take on any more roads until we get more funding. And that's just the honest truth, we're already constantly backlogged so many major areas, House Rock Valley, Coral Pink Sand Dunes Road, Hancock Road, they all need lots of support. I said, okay, how can we work on getting you some more funding then? And so we talked about infrastructure, we talked about, um, state, uh, funding, we talked about TRT, and he said he got about a half million for roads from the TRT fund for twenty twenty-two, which is a, a big help and a great improvement. I'd like to just keep building on that, keep working as a team with the other commissioners.
All right. We have a very diverse county. Without a doubt, the needs on the north side of the county are way different than the needs on the east side of the county. When I was traveling around and talking to different delegates for the Republican, I mentioned, one thing that came up over and over again is that the people in Canav think it's called Canav County and not Kane County, right? And that is, I, I, I heard that way more times than I cared to. One thing that we need to make sure of as county commissioners is that we are having conversations with all of the different towns in the county and making sure that we are working together. We're very, very diverse. Bert Harris, I've had the same conversations with him, and they are, they are stretched incredibly thin. And they're stretched thin at diesel prices or fuel prices at four dollars. You can imagine how, the, the dollars don't change when fuel is five dollars versus four dollars versus three fifty. So they're doing much more with less, and they are definitely stretched thin. But with that being said, if we've got challenges here with our roads, then we need to do something about that. And, and that's just, that's just the truth of the matter, we're going to have to solve our problems, we're all in this together. We just need to be having those conversations. From what I've heard from the people when I'm traveling through the counties, that seriously over here, there is no, there's no conversations being had, and there need to be conversations being had. So, so one thing that I am committed to, and I think everybody here is committed to the same thing, is making sure that we start those conversations. Without a doubt, we need to. UDOT, um, and turn lanes and everything else, hey, I, I work with UDOT all the time with South Center Communications, we do it for right-of-ways, so for different purposes, it's not necessarily, um, turn lanes per se, we're putting fiber optics in, in the roads. But I've, I've met with, uh, with, uh, Jared Beard to talk about light, um, in, in Canav, there's a new intersection, they, they need light, so I have those conversations with them all the time, and, and they need to be had, I have those contacts. I certainly will make sure that, that we get what we need or work to get what we need in our county. Water infrastructure, as Andy mentioned, Mike Noel, very polarizing personality, without a doubt, I, I serve on the water board with Mike, he knows a lot about water, and we need to be having those conversations about the great system we get. He does amazing things, I know he's working with Priya and Clark Bench to, uh, to put a light water system in place right now. And that doesn't happen, you know, overnight, uh, but he's very committed to it, I'm committed to it as a, as a water board member.
All right, thank you. Okay, our third question comes from Clark's Bench and Priya, and it goes as follows. Due to our community's growth, more regulation, our aging population, aging infrastructure, and lack of volunteers that we can no longer rely upon, our water companies have recently voted to have the Kane County Water Conservancy District take over our water system. As we continue to grow, either through our own development within our subdivisions or the developments of SITLA that owns most of the developable property in and around us and does not make us part of the decision process, what would you view county services to be in unincorporated areas of the county? And are forming special service districts to provide these services such as trash removal, roads maintenance, fire protection, the best way forward, especially when we struggle to keep up with what we have now? Okay, that will go to Celeste first, then Mike, then Patty, then Andy.
Okay, so that question is, is it about water?
Do you want me to repeat it?
Well, it's just, it kind of changed in between waters.
So, so basically.
Start special service.
Basically, the aging infrastructure of Priya and Clark Bench and the, the growing requirements from the state have caused the folks out there to really struggle with maintaining the level of service that is required.
So everything includes water?
Required.
I mean, you're talking about everything, not just, just water.
But this question is not just water. No. So with that being said, they struggle to, like, I, I, I know it's been suggested that we form these special services. So it, it's, um, it's been suggested that, um, how do we work together with the county more to provide the kinds of services that we need to provide in these smaller communities that bought before SITLA was there, or bought before all this development has come, but now are taxing their resources? And, you know, our services, light, fire protection, light, uh, garbage service, garbage collection.
We're taxing Big Water services.
Right, right, correct. So how do we work with the, the county, or how do you view what the county responsibilities are to these unincorporated areas that quite frankly can't control their growth because they, they don't, they, they don't have the control over?
Yes, exactly. So you've been handed responsibility without power and support, and how do we fix that? As the county commission, I see the county as being, having a facilitated role, a coordinating role, a mediator role between the state and the other agencies and these entities that are trying to make themselves whole. With the water situation, it is quite interesting. So the, the Kane County Water Conservancy District has a need for more water, um, because the water that they have access to east of, um, Canav, but west of Yaw, um, that's an area that's being developed quite a lot, and they don't have rights to a lot of the water there. So if they, it sounds like they were successful in, um, brokering a deal with you all, in that you have plenty of water rights, you just don't have the infrastructure. you just don't have the infrastructure to properly extract and regulate and distribute that water. So I imagine that the deal that the Kane County Water Conservancy gets is they get access to your water in exchange for infrastructure. And if that's done, it's done. I, my hope for you is that you would be able to not have to necessarily do that deal unless you wanted to. Sounds like that might have happened already. Again, with SITLA, here's another situation where a deal has been made, not necessarily with your buy-in. And just in case anyone's watching on live stream doesn't know what this is about, when the monuments were formed by President Clinton originally, there were SITLA lands, state instituted trust lands dotted throughout the monument. And in order to consolidate the monument as completely federal land, they took the SITLA parcels and consolidated them all around Big Water and Church Wells, Priya, Clark Bench. And now there's all this state land, which has very strict parameters about what can be done with it, with little say from the community, and what can we do about it? Maybe a land swap can be done again. It's going to take a lot of buy-in from locals about what do you want? Do you want it returning to BLM land? Do you want it returning to private use? Do you want to try to broker a deal with SITLA in certain instances? Maybe you want a mixed scenario. But I just want to be there to support you through it and coordinate without necessarily telling you what to do because that's happened in the past.
Yeah, special service districts, to cut right to it, are the answer. They are not a cheap answer at all. But when there are additional services that are needed in areas, then traditionally, special service districts have been the answer. I believe that the county needs, we're all in this together, though, at the end of the day. We need to be working together to find those solutions. We talked about, I talked earlier, and I'll say it again right now, with Clark Bench and New Priya, with the, they're planning on joining the Kane County Water Conservancy District. The Water Conservancy District doesn't need water shares over here, but in order to build the, in order to form that or come into it, the water shares transfer, and we build the infrastructure to provide that. That's just how the system works. And I understand there was conversations that were had, and they decided that they did want to be a part of the Kane County Water Conservancy District. As a board member, I'm looking forward to, to addressing the water needs out in that area, which are significant. And then SITLA, SITLA, I mean, really, you know, no one likes the SITLA situation necessarily. No one likes that a decision can be made by SITLA and it affects what happens right next, because no one enjoys that whatsoever. But it is, the idea of trying to change that, that's a pretty heavy lift, and maybe it's an even insurmountable lift to have SITLA give you the lands back again. I think a better course of action is try to become part of the solution and try to work with, work with developers to develop what you want in your area as opposed to having a developer come in and develop what they want. I mean, I think we can be a part of the solution. The county certainly can help to, to frame those dialogue, to frame those conversations and support the development that we think you want. Again, this all starts with conversations between the county and the respective towns and cities. We need to be communicating, and then we can make sure that we, we try to get the development that we want in our areas that are going to, you know, rising tide lifts all boats.
Patty.
Well, the question was a little confusing, and I think it's been talked about that with the aging system, they've already voted as a community to become part of the Water Conservancy, which would have been my suggestion anyway because they're the experts. It seems like if that's what the majority of people are willing to do, then the Water Conservancy is willing to use their expertise and provide that water. With the special service districts, that was all new to me. I've only been in Utah seven years, so I was like, what's a special service district? You know, the state of Washington, the garbage companies, you know, the county might own the landfill, and it's a private company that comes around and picks up your garbage. It's a lot more expensive, but, so it was a little easier to understand. And I lived in the county when I was in Washington growing up, and I was like, you know, well, did we have fire protection out there? Well, we did. It was a little more populated than it is here, but I think the number one concern I've heard has to do with fire protection. And I know, I don't want to cover that because there was another question about fire. But, and I think we need to think a little bit outside of the box when it comes to some of these services that we need, especially because of the tourism and SITLA's affecting the population that's growing around these cities. It isn't fair to have Big Water be the heavy lifter for some of these. And I agree with Mike Lee's that it's starting the conversations, being able to understand what are the needs and trying to come up with solutions. Maybe we don't know it, I'm sure Andy might have better solutions because he knows what goes up on at the state level, so there might be help that can help the communities. But with the knowledge that's in the community and the knowledge that's up at the government level, at the county level, we just have to work together.
I'll go work on it. Andy, do you want to pitch it?
Again, all great answers and ideas. They're all correct. I, I support the service district concept. There's several ways. First thing, you pay for it. When we have a district, places like Cedar Mountain are probably a decade ahead of some of the more rural parts of our county with that service district concept in mind. And there's a lot of ways to fund a local area project and put money to a real specific goal by doing service districts. And I totally support that concept of local input, again, I think I mentioned that earlier. And, you know, a lot of districts do do fees, but like our trash with Westbury King County landfill, you know, their trash fees are a fourth or less of what, you know, you guys pay through your private trash services, right? So we just expanded all that out into Johnson Canyon, and those people were super excited to get it going because it could save a lot of money. The money they spend goes right to the service they need, whether it's fire or water, kind of in a little different way, but through the Conservancy or EMS. You know, we've got a couple of new districts in the works right now that will cover fire. This includes Kanab Johnson Canyon for one, and then Clorout here for another. And I think if we can keep pushing this concept we've been working on for some time, the idea there is, it's a way to fund money, whether that's tax revenue, grant money, which is very specific, but we need a district to land it in where it helps. Or local user fees, or all three combined. And then you guys can contract for the amount of services you choose with your nearest provider. You know, Church Wells talked about maybe local fire, but I mean, the expense that Big Water has in the equipment, you know, they've got you covered. So that lets you create your own agreement with the city, how much you want to spend, what kind of service, you know, do we want guys out in five minutes? Do we want local guys in our area? You know, Church Wells could say, hey, we want a couple of guys living out here. That's all stuff you can figure out, right? We'll help fund it, we'll set it up. And the revenue model works really well. I mean, the folks on Cedar Mountain love their fire services, the emergency services, right? And they fund that themselves. I don't think you find anybody, hardly, that would say, we don't get what we pay for. Which, if it's just government funded directly, so often that's the case. We didn't get our fair share. So we're working on those districts. I think we need to do more of that. It keeps your money on your project. Water, EMS, what else?
All right, so just to clarify, because I am a resident of Church Wells, we're not, we're not interested in starting our own fire department. We want a project.
I think that went away pretty quick. You talk a million dollar fire truck, that kind of didn't last very long, did it?
All right, so this will be the last and final question. And then after this question, we'll give the candidates a closing statement time, too. So this question comes from Big Water. Wait, did I? I asked the third question. We're on the fourth question, sorry. All right, okay. So this question pertains to how SITLA affects us in our areas, but it kind of pertains to each of us individually. So Big Water's kind of issue with SITLA would be that the BON did promise some lands to Big Water City before Clint made it a monument. And then when that whole swap got taken, the, Big Water was cut completely out of that process. And then Church Wells' issue with SITLA is that we worry about our aquifers. Celeste was talking about the water rights. And we're worried that SITLA could want to wash the solar cells and just tap into our aquifer and start pouring in a bunch of water. Clark Bench's issue with SITLA might be something like a wind farm that could just be built, and none of us community members would have seen it. So the question is, how do you feel about how SITLA determines the growth out here? And is it fair that they live by different rules than we do? And this will start with Andy again, then Patty, Celeste, then Mike.
Yeah, SITLA, what a loaded deal when they created that. And that goes clear back in the founding of the state, right? And it was, it was a noble concept originally, right? I mean, Celeste explained it quite well. We were going to keep the feds controlling the entire state, right? But sadly, I guess it was Governor Levitt, I think, that sold us out, right? Without anybody even knowing that the monument was going to be created, let alone trading all that private land to the Clinton administration to do with what they saw fit. And then, you know, they took a bunch of those sections. It took them to Stoward and Big Cockwood and, I mean, San Juan County is going through that right now in their areas. And it's going to, it's the grand staircase all over again, and they are going to get screwed. And they have no say in it, absolutely zero. As a county, they don't even ask, you know, what's your thoughts on this process? And we're to love Dave here and the SITLA folks, and they're some good folks. It's a personal thing, but they have, it's, it's amazing. They have all the control, and we have no say in what they can or cannot do. So the only thing I can see, and this is not a solution, but all you can do is try to get good projects that people you trust will do to make SITLA money. Because if it doesn't make SITLA money, they don't want to talk to you. So we're going to get developed, we've been discovered. People are coming. Our only hope is to court the right projects and the right people that will respect us a little bit with our values. So it's a tough one. I mean, they, it's been proven time and time again that they can do basically what they want, when they want. They ask for nice little letters from us, and we say, well, we'd like you to do this. You know, worry, you know, watch water, night skies, you know, improve the roads, whatever. But it is purely a please, mother, may I kind of thing, and then they do what they want with you. So that's a rotten answer, there's no solution there. But unless the legislature will help us, we're, they're the 800-pound gorilla. And I don't see any sign of the legislature having any more supporting us in, you know, in any local efforts. We'll keep fighting that fight, but they're under a new management mound. They've got a new director, Dave retired. Maybe they'll take a little softer tone with their new CEO running the thing over here. She's pretty awesome, been with them a long time, yet to be seen. Was there more to that with SITLA? I stopped totally on SITLA pretty much. But yeah, that affects us all the same. From Cedar Mountain all the way, you know, the entire county has the same problem. If it's not in the monument, we're battling with SITLA. So between the two of them, we've got 95% of our county under somebody else's control.
So I wasn't aware of the situation with SITLA land around Big Water, and I just thought I kind of understood SITLA till I was researching more about the Big Water. I would listen to the city council meeting that was on Tuesday, and they had Representative Aaron Langston, who was talking about how this SITLA works and what the bid. So obviously, it's a little different with the Big Water. I guess my first question or suggestion is if there is documentation that there was supposed to be a land trade, or Big Water was supposed to be able to acquire some of the land, if there's something legally, like a lawsuit, that maybe the county with the, we have attorneys, I know at the small level of the cities and municipalities, you probably don't have that legal help. Maybe that's something the county could help with, doing some kind of a lawsuit or trying to get that land or make them stick to the agreement that they had. If it isn't right, if it's just BOCO, then, if it's just verbal, then there's probably not any luck in trying to go back that far back and get it. And I also think if you just, I don't know if Aaron Langston is a representative with this part of SITLA, that was the project that's out by the reservoir. And they do take in consideration what the public is saying. They might, it's all about money, too. So you have to be careful what you ask for. If you want to start, people start developing, it has to go out to bid to everybody, and that's kind of how things get thrown out there. Such as the golf course, it had to open up to everybody, and a developer came in and offered a lot more profit. So it is all about the profit from them, but I think you have to be involved. And if you find out that something's happening, contact SITLA a little bit how you feel. And also go to any public meetings that the county may be having. I know one of the things, we talked about the solar farm, and there wasn't much information, and I don't have any idea if the county had anything to do with that or not. But hopefully, if there's any decision being made by the county, it is open up to the public to attend a public meeting so they can give their input.
All right, Celeste.
Yeah, Andy touched on David Gurr retired, and Michelle McConkey, who'd been an attorney for a long time before SITLA, took over as the CEO. So she's over the state entity, SITLA. And then regionally, we have Ron Torgerson. But then, within that framework, Aaron Langston is the Southern Utah Development Coordinator for SITLA. So if something's going to be developed, then it goes through Aaron. If something's just in our region, not necessarily to do with development, but maybe a mineral rights or some other thing, it goes through Ron Torgerson. So it is helpful for your county commissioners to know who's over what and to have a good working relationship with them. I talked to Michelle the other day and just introduced myself and talked with her briefly. Been in conversations with the other SITLA representatives. And what Commissioner Gant laid out is true. There is very little power, especially with a county. A county has even less say. They can request mitigating measures be adopted by SITLA. Then it's up to SITLA whether they do that or not. A city maybe gets listened to a tiny bit more. What can we do? And really, what do you all want to do? I know there was talk about putting a maverick right next to the 89 just because SITLA works a lot with mavericks. And then that would only go in if sewer went in. And then sewer's a can of worms, because once you get sewer, the state code requires, requires that anyone within a certain footage has to also hook up to sewer and pay for that. And it just kind of, it invites more development, so it creates this roller coaster system. So I was talking with Aaron Langston with SITLA about that. And he was saying, the good news is, if, if Big Water doesn't want it, because so far you haven't wanted it with sewer, that they just kind of sit back and wait. They, they're thinking of perpetuity. SITLA's going to be SITLA forever, and there's no big urgency on their part. So that's your one glimmer of hope, is that you've got a little bit of say as a city. I'm talking to Big Water folks right now. Again, Commissioner Gant touched on, okay, our only out really is working with the legislature. And that's where it's so important to work as a Southern Utah Five County Association of Governments and coalition with our neighboring counties. So I've been endorsed by County Commissioner Paul Cousins in Iron County and Victor Iverson in Washington County, et cetera. And we all want to work together to have a stronger voice.
Wait. We've got to find a way to be a part of the solution. SITLA and that whole situation, it's crumbling, right? Because there's so many variables, almost all of the variables, that are out of our control. And you can pass on one project, but be careful what you get on the next project. A perfect example, whether you like golf or not, in Kanab, there was a golf course that was proposed on SITLA land. And a lot of people threw a fit for, for lots of reasons. Now, what is going to go there? SITLA, so it went, it was a SITLA, so it went, it was an open process. The golf course put their proposal on the land, and the winning bidder is a developer. And they, they can put now up to five hundred homes in this one hundred acre lot that was previously open space next to our reservoir, right? So, I mean, that's five hundred homes, like two cars per home, that's a thousand cars going up this road, you know, potentially. So, be careful what you ask for. That's the only thing with SITLA. I think that you need to be a part of the solution. We're never going to get rid of SITLA again. It's an impossible ask. SITLA has a mandate to, to produce the most amount of money for the schoolchildren. That is their mandate, as Celeste mentioned. If you don't want this project, no problem, we'll just sit back and, and they, they treat it as it's, it's their landing perpetuity until it's, until it's sold or developed and, you know, or there's a project that they do want. I think we need to be a part of the solution. Find out, you know, have conversations amongst your elected officials. What do, what would you like there? And then, although it's a heavy lift on your part, find a development that meets what you need. SITLA stinks, I get it, but you can be a part of the solution. And I think that is it.
All right. Okay, the fifth and final question comes from Big Water again. The Big Water Fire Department is extremely successful, mainly because we have great people who have dedicated their whole heart and soul to the success of it. But almost just as important, we think about the future and try to plan for it. For us to maintain the level of service we are trying to live up to, we staff our fire engine and EMS with staff. They are ready to go at a moment's notice. This county is growing, and tourism has impacted the day-to-day operations of our department. And we can no longer sustain the status quo with volunteers. Ask the sheriff how the influx of nine-one-one calls have impacted his department just this year. Kane County is the only county in the state of Utah that does not fund fire departments that respond to unincorporated areas or the work they do on the highways. We are not seeking the county to fully fund our fire department or EMS staff. However, the county commission voted to increase, using TRT funds, the Kane County Sheriff's budget by four hundred thousand to mitigate the effects and impacts this department, this department had. It is our understanding that the portion of the TRT funds can be allocated and used to mitigate the impacts the additional visitors are having on our area. What can you do as a county commissioner to help us receive our portion of these funds so that we can continue to bring the best EMS and fire protection services we can to this area and the county? And that will start with Michael, Celeste, Patty, and then you.
So, again, we've talked about TRT funds, there are strings on everything. I mean, it's, it's very limited on what we can and cannot use TRT funds for. Certainly, I think we are all in this together. We need to find solutions that all of our county citizens have. Fire, EMS, fire trucks, fire equipment in general is outrageously expensive. If you have not looked at how much a fire truck costs, I mean, Andy mentioned earlier, I believe, fire trucks a million bucks. That price just seems outlandish to me, but it is what it is. We are in this together, we've got to find solutions together. In my mind, if TRT is the answer, the one thing that we need to really work on is getting much more flexibility in what TRT funds can be used for. As Commissioner Gant mentioned earlier, there are strings on everything, and they're changing that, there's, they're loosening up on that. But our needs in Kane County are way different than the needs in Salt Lake County. So, Kane should be able to, to place that money where it is best used for us. We should be able to make, to have that decision-making authority. That's going to take some, some, some change in legislation. I think we should really work hard to do that. Until we get flexibility in TRT funds and how they're spent, then we're going to be left with special service districts and funding individually in those areas, the special service districts. So, again, it's, it's a, it's a difficult situation for sure. I believe if we're looking at TRT, then we're going to have to have some more flexibility on how that is spent. That's it.
Yep.
So, to be clear, the current parameters on TRT does not include fire. EMS, yes. Roads, yes. Tourism mitigation in other areas, yes. But I guess the fire lobby was asleep at the wheel that particular session, and so for this year anyway, fire's not in the range of possibilities. Now, does that mean that TRT money couldn't be given to Big Water to spend on other things? And then that frees their budget up a little bit to put some funding of their own into fire? No, you could do that. It's an interesting problem. So, Kanab, the county seat, has the same issue in that the city of Kanab Fire Department is answering calls for service outside of the city of Kanab. And it's a bit of a complicated relationship with the county. It would be good, I think, to work with our city attorney and our county attorney to firm up the contracts of who does what and delineate it a little bit further. In the meantime, we're right back to responsibility without power when we've got the need, and you all want to save lives, that life is precious. You want to answer the call, and then do you have the resources and the support to do that? Yes, but it's a strain. So, again, we need to advocate with the state legislature, and I am in a prime position to be able to do that for you. We need to take a hard look at these issues, and, and I know Amon has, Amaliri, excuse me, has a relationship with your fire services, and, yeah, it's a, it's a very big issue, and we can't just drop the ball around it. And I know you need support, you need coordinating, you need facilitating, that kind of thing from the county, and we'll do what we can, I believe, and work as a team to address your issues.
So, you answered the question, because in the emails that came through, they were going to verify if Kane County was really the only county that didn't give any of the funds for fire protection. So, I'd like to know more about that.
I'm sorry, that has not been there.
Been verified? Okay. That was going to be my question, was it verified? Because it seemed really odd if we were the only one.
That's not the case.
Not the case, okay.
Absolutely not.
Well, anyway, good, glad you cleared that up. Because if we were the only one, I'd want to know why. And, you know, it seems like something that money needs to go forward, because that's another, besides, I think, fire, depending on who you're talking to, it's either water or fires are number one concern, especially for people that are not in an incorporated city, it's fire. They're having to pay an extra hundred dollars a month because they don't have that dedicated fire protection, at least out in Vermillion Cliffs and some places closer to Kanab. I don't know how it is out here on this side of the county. How much your insurance is more than other people that live like in Big Water. I believe it is something, I know the county's made great strides in making sure that every, I want to say every inch of the county has some fire, they're in a fire protection district. I mean, that's just setting it up, and there's a lot more work to do. I do feel like there should be some kind of fire station between Johnson Canyon and Big Water. How that's funded, I don't see why it can't be funded with some kind of county money in addition to fees. Things aren't, nothing is free, so there's always taxation that goes along with things. But that, that's a service that we need, and that's a service we need. And we're allowing these subdivisions to be built in the county at a little higher density. If there's a fire, it's going to take out a lot of homes. It's not like just the big farms that had twenty-some acres, now we're having people living closer together out in the rural parts of the county. So, I do support seeing what we can do to ensure that every citizen in Kane County has that fire protection, and it is something that works for them. I know, I don't know the details up on Cedar Mountain, but I would say up there, a lot of that is second homes for people, and the income of people, there's some pretty nice homes up there. So, I would say that their income's a little different than maybe the people that are living in Church Wells and needing that fire protection. So, it might not work that it comes out of, directly out of the pocket of the people in Church Wells, it's something that is given with the TRT money, CIB loans, whatever, there's grants out there, things that we can do to give that protection.
Yeah, Patty's got a great start there, that's exactly right. It is a combination of CIB grants. You know, that's the real funding for equipment now. If you do it right, you can, you can raise a lot of equipment money. We're working currently on some more stuff here for Big Water for CIB. I'm on that board, so I know we're, we've got some pretty good asks coming out of Big Water. Big Water done an amazing job, you know, they negotiated a great contract to help the county with Amaliri. We got that move from Greenhaven, you know, which was, you know, out-of-state response, which was, I think, was ludicrous. So, with some real pushes here on this side, it's brought a lot of revenue into the area, and that's helpful to keep you guys going. TRT is definitely a play, but the real, we don't want to be like Granite County or some of these others, sort of funded services solely based on TRT. Or like hiring, you know, positions, doing NTEs based on TRT. Because that thing is like this, right now, we're way up here, but you know, if something changes, and who knows what the economy that we've been given these last few years, it could change dramatically, and then TRT dries up. So, yeah, it's there, and we want to spend it the best way we can spend it, but we've got to be careful to not pay for ongoing services. As a commission, we haven't used any of that for general budget stuff. Carlos, you know, led the charge on this, you know, all the way through, places like Granite, you know, they ran their county on TRT money. Youwin ran, they had fire services, they had trash services, they were funding all that on TRT, and they got in trouble, and they ended up, some of their service districts evaporated, they had to shut it completely down. What a tough decision that would be. You know, what kind of services are we just eliminating across the board? And then handing those back to taxpayers. We're so lucky here to have a great tourism-based economy with a lot of TRT. We haven't had to make those tough decisions, you know, thankfully. But like I said, we are totally changing the way we're allocating that. And I think Patty had a great comment, if we can use that for other budget items to help, maybe we can funnel other money into things like fire services. I totally support the SSD concept again, because that gives us, that gives somebody to go for grants. Now, we go for CIB, right? And it's loan money, and the taxpayers should pay that back. We have SSDs in place, we can do tons of other resources. It's all taxpayer money, but if there's federal funding available to help us do it, I think we're stupid to not ask for those funds, right? Somebody's going to spend them. I know there's a lot of locals that would say, it's still taxpayer money, we don't want it, but it's going somewhere. Let's get organized and get our districts in place, and get our hands on that funding to bring local services. Fire, I'll see, what else? No.
I thought you talked about SITLA, what a CRA is, real quick, if you could. You'll be the best person to explain that.
I, I really have to, it's kind of unfair that I have more information to share when we're in, I mean, these are a great group of folks. Any one of the four of us here, I think, would do a great job. It is a little slanted that I maybe have a little more background just in one term, but CRAs are an awesome tool as well to keep funds local, right? Only the local taxpayer pays into that reinvestment area. The RDA piece is super confusing because of all the acronyms. It's county-wide, right? So, anybody can apply. If they want to invest funds in your area or do a really cool project, and they don't have enough for all the infrastructure, they can come to the county, and this is a super controversial topic, but done right, it's a tool that's used across the nation, or hundreds of them in Salt Lake County, not we, we're always in Salt Lake County, but you can use new money that's generated by a business to fund the infrastructure and require amenities to run that business, right? In some areas, they give it specifically to a single business, it's going to bring a lot of employees. Probably heard many of those large companies will come. And people are, why are you funding so big company? You know, it's stupid, Hollywood or Amazon or whatever. But if you can get them in your county and get development agreements that protect you and bring jobs, and you are only promising a portion of new money they generate, there's a really good argument to do that. Because the developer, in my opinion, this is some of your SITLA stuff, make them pay for the infrastructure. The campground thing up here and all that, they got to put in twelve-inch water line and fire hydrants, and, and they're not just benefiting themselves, but the mayor's on their case, and he usually is, to make sure that they're covered, right? A new water tank and stuff will be at their expense. And if you build it right, and it's not just to benefit them, but it would benefit the next developer or the next residential neighborhood or whatever wants to go in, and infrastructure's now in place.
So, did the RDA board help facilitate that development as it goes, like to make sure that it's being, like that things are being thought of, like drainage and water and all of that?
It's one of those scenarios where the county commission has a scary amount of power. Use it right, it's wonderful, and you know, you can, you've got to keep an eye on it, though. But yeah, they do, they are that RDA board by state law. This is not unique, none of this is unique to Kane County. This is all state guidelines that tell you how to do these things to the letter. And they do, the magic words in this rezoning conversation and all this gross stuff we're hearing about, in my opinion, I was talking to Michael about this earlier, is there's two major development agreements. If you're interested in what's going on, or going to be built, or you want to be built in your city or county, be there and at the table to argue these development agreements. And make sure that your county attorney, city attorney is very clearly spelling out, not only do we want enough water to run your project, but if we need money for a well or a partial upgrade to services, they're paying for that. And they will do that. I mean, that's how these developers get into these places. You hold their feet to the fire and get a good development agreement, pick the right partner, and it's a win-win, assuming it's compatible with your community in the right place, right? That's your zoning piece. They are a great tool, and the big thing is, like the East Zion project, with the RDA boundaries, their base tax stays coming to the county just as it is, there's never a reduction in fees. But you can give them a, a portion of the new money that they generate, and then, but the county can still say exactly what that gets spent on. So, you still have control throughout the entire life of the project. And then, you know, it's really up for debate how much of that is shared, is shared, you know, how much you put back into the infrastructure versus new tax money to the county. I think for the right infrastructure, it's worth a pretty good portion, right, to get that project done, assuming it wouldn't otherwise be done. If it's something they're going to build anyway, why would you share a portion? But when there's things like roads, water, sewer, all the things we're always talking about, power, that need to be done first to bring that investment money, seed money into your area, I think those types of expenditures are well-studied. Sewer for Big Water, if you chose to put somebody to do that, you got the right development agreement going with some of these guys, maybe you could fund, you know, a big chunk of your sewer system through a developer.
Right. It's kind of like an impact fee?
It, it's exactly right. It's an impact fee, isn't it? The mayor's worked on, yeah, cost per, you know, per user or whatever, aesthetic impact fee, same concept, but it is a, it's a, it's a way to adjust impact fees without affecting everyone. You get a target, the developer, and in my opinion, money well spent. Our turn lanes that we're getting through town here, we wouldn't be getting those if there wasn't developments going in that have promised the mayor money to offset the UDOT cost to do these turn lanes. UDOT won't even talk to you unless you come up with half the money, right? And then you still have to meet their traffic studies and their safety programs. But if you can find some way to fund the other half, they're more than willing to come. And that's what we got to work on, things like Pria and Cardman's getting turn lanes for Church Wells and so forth. UDOT will not do it on their own. And the county really doesn't have a funding mechanism specifically for state highway work, but we can darn well help coordinate, and we're doing some funding on our turn lanes here, I can't remember the mayor what we committed, the county's buying in on that. But primarily, that's the developers making that discussion take place. UDOT won't even hear us out for all these turns, but things like a Maverick or an RV park or whatever, now all of a sudden, they're perfect. But things like a Maverick or an RV park or whatever, now all of a sudden, they're purping up 'cause they get some money out of it. How the developer, you know?
Thank you, no, I appreciate it, I appreciate you all again for coming out. So let's do our closing statements now, each candidate will be given three minutes to make a final statement. And we will start with Patty and Andy and Celeste and Michael.
I think it was a little off the scent.
You can go first, Celeste.
I don't, I don't care.
I think I was right here just talking. I remember that I was last. Amaliri's been on.
Old fire. I don't, no, however you said it. Yeah. Structure versus the.
All right, so let's go with Patty and Andy and we'll go with Mike and then. Yeah.
Maybe it's the military, I mean. I'm so grateful for everybody that came out tonight, it's great to see all of you. It's a little embarrassing, I realize I've been in Kane, Kane County for seven years and it's myself running and going and visiting communities is the first time I've been some places, so, I mean, I have come out and ridden my four-wheeler side-by-side down at the county parade, but can't be not here. But I haven't ever gone around and, and just really checked out Big Water, so that's something I have to correct in my schedule. But I am grateful I've been able to, some of the faces are starting to look familiar from being at the caucus or the convention night to being at the state convention, so it's nice to have faces start looking familiar, to start feeling more like a community. I am grateful that this was organized, everyone coming and sharing our thoughts. I've learned a lot just from everybody sitting at the table, 'cause I'm far from an expert on a lot of these subjects, but it's been great to be able to do some research and learn about them. I would look forward to the opportunity to serve as your county commissioner to further the growth of Kane County and strengthen the areas that are weak and then learn from each other. And I like what was said by Michael East, that we're all in this together, that, you know, it is a team effort. We can't forget about, we're only as strong as our weakest link as we go as a community in Kane County. So I appreciate you coming out and listening to us and listening to me.
I was next. Um, yeah, again, Patty says it all, sums it up perfectly. We're a great, it's a great community, we gotta stick together Republicans these days. You know, it's just so fractured, there's so many different areas, parts of the country. We gotta keep, in my opinion, we need to keep the national politics out of what's going on here because it's just such a crap show. You know, both liberal and conservative, it's just, there's trouble on all sides. So I just love living in Utah because we are so much better at most of that than, than a lot of these states are. So I enjoy being part of the Republican Party, the organization this year has been phenomenal, to see all the great delegates out to the caucus. Of, of all the crap that's going on, it really has got the base out, you know, and you got four great candidates up here, but all do you a great job, they've got Republican values, I think. We're, we're in good hands with all the people that serve throughout, county staff, employees, our cities, great place to live. A couple of things I did miss, the hospital's taken over a lot of our EMS stuff and we've worked with the mayor and your fire chief, great things going on with our new hospital district, or our hospital director. Unbelievable the transition that that's gone through. So our EMS services, I mean, he's already been out in multiple meetings and we've got some unbelievable collaboration going that the county's never been able to have with a hospital. It's just always been pretty cold communications between the old hospital CEO, so different now, so that's gonna be a massive blow. Then we, we still need to drill down into our, our rangeland fire protection services versus our structured fire county-wide. We've had some great conversations on those issues. We just need the community weigh-in to see what they want it to look like. You know, we get the right people, you know, to the table to discuss what it needs to be and how, and we're dedicated in doing that. So we will keep pushing forward in those areas. Been going for one term, gotta do another if it supports the will of the people and we'll hopefully do better and do more of what we're doing.
So I've been in, as I mentioned in my opening statement, I've been in, in Utah for eleven years. I love Kane County, I love the value system that we have here, I love raising my family here. The secret's out, we are growing. There is not gonna be any, any stopping the growth, but I do believe that we need to be deliberate and strategic about the decisions that we make about our growth. That is something that I do at South Center Communications every day, is make strategic decisions. I, South Center Communications, as you know, serves, or you may know, serves Garfield, Iron, Wayne, Sevier, Paiute, Kane Counties. We have about thirty thousand high-speed internet customers overall. I've spent the last eleven years at South Center Communications developing high-speed internet in all of those different communities, meeting the diverse needs of all of those different communities. Making strategic decisions is something I do on a daily basis. If elected, I would be more than happy to help all of us make those strategic decisions to grow our communities. This is Kane County, not Canav County. We need to have conversations, the county commissioners need to have conversations with all of the different areas. What is needed in Duck Creek is gonna be way different than what may be needed in Big Water or Church Wells. I believe we need to work together with our elected officials and make sure that the decisions we make complement the vision that you have for your respective communities. Again, making strategic decisions, making deliberate decisions to grow communities is what I do on a daily basis and I'd be happy to do that for the citizens of Kane County if I'm elected.
Thanks again for having these conversations with us. I was recently at the Utah State Convention with the other state delegates and something that one of the candidates said in their campaign speech really ringed true. They said, "You can pretend to care, but you can't pretend to show up." And I've been showing up for Kane County for years. I understand that Kane County Commissioner is a full-time job and I've already arranged my responsibilities so that I can be there for people of Kane County for about a year now. I, so my husband and I own two small businesses together, two family-owned businesses. One of the businesses, I've cut down on production so that I can give more time to the county. The other business, my husband Nicholas has taken over the daily responsibilities so that I can turn my attention to county matters and city matters. And I go to every workshop, every conference, every event possible, because the better part of a job that I've done is showing up. I go to UDOT conferences, planning events for the state, disaster preparedness for elected officials, anything I can do because work plus research equals effective advocacy for you. I'm just gonna point out the elephant in the room. No commissioner in my knowledge has ever been actively in someone else's employ. They've always been either an independent business owner or retired. Because of the demands of the position, it makes it very difficult to be able to give yourself freely to the county unless you're in that position of being your own business owner, being able to delegate your time, or being retired. What else sets me apart as a candidate? I am the only one before you who has attended every meeting for Canav City Council in the past four years. I've been going to you to share positions on social media since 2018. We may not agree on everything, but I am very respectful, I'm engaged, I listen to you, I value your input and my positions are known, I'm, I'm a known entity. Please don't take my word for it. Please check on the Canav City Facebook page. You can see who shows up to the meetings and who has a history of absenteeism. I come to every meeting and I'm engaged, I listen to people, I network with people. I show up because I respect you, your agency and your sovereignty. Your, the oath that I made to you to protect your constitution and protect your rights is always on the top of my mind. Every family is important.